Senate will come to order for this Wednesday, November 3rd, 10 o'clock in the morning. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Wednesday, November 3rd. Anderson?
Here.
Baldwin?
Here.
Feitman?
Here.
Boner? Bouchard?
Here.
Case?
President.
Cooper?
Chair.
Driscoll?
Here.
Ellis? French?
Here.
Furphy?
Here.
Guru?
Here.
Hicks?
Here.
Hutchings? James?
Here.
Kinskey?
Here.
Cole?
Brother.
Cost?
Here.
Landon?
Here.
McEwen?
Here.
Nethercutt? Pappas? Excused? Perkins?
Here.
Rothfuss?
Here.
Salazar?
Yes.
Schuler? Scott? Excused? Steinmetz?
Here.
Wasserberger?
Here.
President Docstatter?
Here.
Mr. President, 20 present to excused.
Thank you. Prayer by Reverend Gilbert.
I'd like to share a personal experience, quote some scripture, and then have a prayer. I ran the Boulder Boulder several times many years ago. And when you get to the end of that 6.5 mile race, there's an incline at just about saps all the strength you have. And then there's a decline. And then you hit Folsom Field. You're running on concrete and blacktop. And all of a sudden, you hit that soft, spongy, artificial turf. And your weak knees want to buckle, and some do. But in the stadium around there, there's family, friends, people who finished the race before you. And they're cheering you on. So there's a great cloud of witnesses. Words from the book of Hebrews. Surrounded by a great cloud of witnesses, run with perseverance the race set before you. Therefore, lift your drooping hands and strengthen your weak knees. Now, the author of Hebrews says, "Looking to Jesus." Some of you may feel comfortable with that phrase. But in this building, there are pictures of people who have preceded us. Look to them for the inspiration that comes for this day. May we pray. Eternal and ever-strengthened God, this is no time for drooping hands and weak knees. We are in need of strength and stamina, wisdom and words, courage and commitment to do the right for Wyoming and all her citizens. Strengthen us for the legislation before us. And may the Senate be indivisible, bringing liberty and justice for all. We offer our prayer in humility and with honesty. Amen and amen.
Cost, would you lead us in the pledge?
Reverend, let me just say, pray in the United States of America, in this republic which stands one nation, one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. Thank you, Senator. Reading correction, approval of the journal. Will the reading clerk please read the journal committee report?
Mr. President, your journal committee reports that the Journal of November 2nd, 2021, has been read and recommends that it be approved. Sign for the chairman, Senator Mike Peru.
Are there any objections? There being none, the report is adopted. Senator McEwen.
It was a privilege to the floor, Mr. President.
Please do, sir.
The way events have been handled lately is really disappointing to me. We have tied up members of this body. We have implicated the president of the Senate. And a lot of these people are not involved in it. And I would just tell you, you got a problem with me, come talk to me. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator. Proceed to third readings now. Bills on third reading and final passage. House Bill 1001, third reading of the House bill.
House Bill 1001, COVID-19 vaccine employer mandates, an act relating to labor unemployment sponsored by Representative Greer.
There are amendments. First reading amendment number three to House Bill 101, please read it in. This is the engrossed copy.
House Bill 1001, third reading amendment number one, two engrossed copy, delete thee.
Senator Hicks.
Mr. President, I would move third reading amendment number one to House Bill 1001 and ask for your favorable consideration. Members of the body, this amendment just goes into, I believe, one of the last amendments that we adopted, the Hutchinson second reading amendment, and deletes that amendment entirely. For a description, Mr. President, as to why I think this is appropriate, while I commend my colleague from Laramie County for her efforts to clean this bill up. I think there was some unintended consequences associated with that. Mr. Chairman, it does make it, and I believe to the intent of my colleague was, is to make a clean, clear mandate, anti-vaccine mandate bill. And I think it actually does that. But my concern is, is I've listened to the debates, and I've listened to my colleagues, is I think that we've always tried to strike that balance between the constitutional rights of business and the constitutional rights of individuals. And what I think our charter and what we've tried to do through all of these debates and all of the work in the last two weeks is balance those scales of justice for both of those. That they have equal footing in the Wyoming Legislature, within the state of Wyoming, and under our constitutional form of a Republican government, Mr. President. I think my concern is, right now, that this puts a thumb on the scale just a little bit and starts to infringe upon those constitutional rights of business. And so while I commend the efforts, I think we've probably tilted the scale too much in the way of individual freedoms and liberties. While I hold those sacred and sacrosanct, we have a responsibility, as in the Wyoming Legislature, to try to thread that needle, to try to do the best for both entities. And, Mr. Chairman, they don't have any malice associated with my colleague. I think she did what she intended to do, clearly within her right. But I think we've now tipped the scales just a little bit too far one way. And so I would ask for your favorable consideration of an "I" vote on third read amendment number one. I would stand for any question.
Discussion on the amendment, on the amendment. Senator Guru?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. A question for the bringer of the amendment. I want to make sure I understand clearly. You talked about unintended consequences. Unintended consequences of the previous amendment, which is giving you rise to come to have that stricken in this amendment. I just want to know if you could just talk me through a couple of those, so I can get a flavor for what you're talking about. Thank you, Mr. President.
Let's hold before we go back to the sponsor for their discussion. Further questions? Senator Hutchings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As with the good Vice President, I appreciate his thoughtful consideration to come to me and let me know he was going to bring this amendment. And I truly appreciate it because I believe we all have a right to stand up for what we believe is right in this body. And I've been told over and over, when I want to bring an amendment, Lynn, you do what you think is right. And I appreciate that. So I don't hold any malice over the thought that someone wanted to remove that amendment because it's his right. What I was trying to do, in my mind, was ban the mandate, allow employers to test their employees as they saw fit, and allow the law to stay until the litigation was complete. Just try to clarify and clean up all the stuff that was in the previous bill. But it looks like we want to bring all that back, which is fine. But when we bring it back, I still think the employers and the employees are going to still be at odds. With the current amendment, it allows both the employer and the employee to have a sense of freedom that, okay, things are going to just be chilled out until we can go through the litigation. So I'm on and against the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion? For those listening, we are on third reading amendment number one to House Bill number 101001. Further discussion? Back to the sponsor.
Mr. President, just as a response to my colleague from Teton County, this is a clear mandate. It says, "No employer shall require a mandate." That's period. Defended. That clearly puts employers that are under OSHA, that are under CMS, that have federal contracts. Clearly, we now have, because the other provision in this, it struck out in the amendment. It struck out that this law now governs in the state of Wyoming, as the amendment stands. You have clearly now put a situation where it's either/or. That's the effect of it. And quite frankly, it doesn't grant the, it's silent on the religious exemptions. It's silent on medical waivers. It's silent within the current bill. We've allowed for some exceptions that an employer may look at, that currently on federal law. It does exactly what I think my colleague described yesterday. There is no mandates for an employer in the state of Wyoming that you can't enforce federal law. This becomes a law. I just think, Mr. Chairman, it doesn't reach the balance that we've tried to reach for the last two weeks as we had these debates on and for the amendment.
Ready for the question? Question being called. All those in favor of third reading amendment number one to House Bill 1001, say "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Eyes haven't? Next amendment for our consideration. Third reading amendment number two to House Bill 1001. Reading clerk, read it in, please.
House Bill 1001, third reading amendment number two to engrossed copy, page two, lines five through 10.
Senator Hicks.
Mr. President, I would move third reading amendment number two to House Bill 1001 and ask for your favorable consideration, members of the body. This is the amendment yesterday. Even with the current amendments we had, I've been advised by our LSO staff that this is still necessary to include. So if you just go through page one through four, that's just a renumbering sequence. They have gone in and reformatted it. So when you get down to line 19, rather than have a run-on series of sentences to be appropriate formatting, they brought that in there. Mr. President, with the adoption of the last amendment, we no longer need lines 38 through 40, all the way over to page two on line two. So with that, Mr. President, I don't know if we, I'll divide the amendment. So the division would be line one through 36 would be division one. I would ask you to vote "aye" to incorporate the technical corrections. Mr. President, if there's no question, I'd call for a question.
Calling for the question, absent objection. Senator Rothfuss, and then to Senator Wasserberger.
Thanks, Mr. President. I think we need just a little more time on the division. We need to state both divisions.
Oh, sorry.
Beyond the first division, and then divisible. And then beyond that, I just don't necessarily
Let's do this.
Understand why we're dividing.
Thank you. Thank you. Senator Hicks, Mr. Vice President, restate your motion for division one, and then note division two. If you'd repeat that for the record, please.
Okay, Mr. President, division one is line one through line 36.
And division two?
Division two is line 38 through the balance of page one. On over to page two, line one through two would be division two.
Divisible? And once again, back to you, Mr. Vice President. Back to you.
Mr. President, division one is just a technical correction.
There, that's what I'm looking for. Okay. So, absent objection, we're going to proceed now, Ben, with our first vote. You have been asked to vote "aye" on division one, a technical correction. That's lines one through 36. All in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Division one of third reading amendment number two to House Bill 1001 has passed the Senate. Go to division two, Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Chairman, division two is now no longer applicable. So I will withdraw division two, bar any objections at this time.
Thank you. You've heard the request from Vice President. Division two has been withdrawn, absent objection. With that, are you ready for the question on the amendment? Oh, Mr. Senator Kinskey.
Just, I hope I'm not out of order. I guess this would be a procedural question. I'm not sure where we stand on this bill now. And so I appreciate if my calling to the right could give us a little more explanation where we are, particularly the word we debated yesterday, "not." Is the intent of amendment number two that after adoption, the bill will say these mandates will go into effect until invalidated, or will not go into effect until invalidated by a court?
Let's collect a few more before we go back to the sponsor. Senator Landon.
Mr. President, thank you. And I appreciate my good friend from the north asking one of the questions I had. And then the second clarification that would really help me, Mr. President, is in my district up home, I described to you six or eight different healthcare entities that I believe would be impacted by this idea of 100 or more employees. We're drawing a line and saying, you know, anybody above this is X, and anybody below this is Y. And, you know, I realize that not all our districts out there have businesses of over 100. I've got several. And I could really use, I tried to get a better understanding during the debate of this bill. And now, in this amendment, it would really help me to understand, what is the singling out of this artificial number? We picked 100 employees. Help me understand why we need that in the bill. Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions before we go back to the sponsor? Senator Case.
Just point of order, making sure where we're at. Because we actually adopted this amendment with the vote on division one. The rest of it was withdrawn. So discussion now is not about the amendment. We're either back on the bill, or there are other amendments. And I mean this, but I think that's correct.
Thank you. Back on the bill is what we're at.
And I believe there is another amendment, but I'm not sure how it fits.
Yes, there are, but we still need to please.
Mr. President, I think the good senator's exactly right. My apologies to the floor. We will save maybe a little bit of a visit
Back on the bill.
Back on the bill. But he's right. We did adopt division number one. So thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate Senator Case's observations. And Senator Landon, you just warmed him up for the discussion. All right. Senator Hicks.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, again, once we adopted the first, or the first reading amendment, third reading amendment number one, the withdrawal is because that's now a technical correction. By adopting that first amendment, you no longer need that. It's not applicable in the bill. So that became a technical correction after we adopted third reading amendment number one. So just for clarification, that's why it was withdrawn. That's the advice of our legal staff, is that's no longer applicable in the bill. So again, that would be a technical correction. We no longer need it. That's why it was withdrawn. And that's just for the edification as to why that, structurally, why that was.
Senator, thank you for that. And we've already passed the first division, so we're going to proceed on to the next amendment. Third reading amendment number three to House Bill 1001, the clerk will please read it in.
House Bill 1001, third reading amendment number three to engrossed copy, page four, line two.
Senator Hutchings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to withdraw this amendment.
Absent objection. Third reading amendment number three to House Bill 1001 has been withdrawn. Third reading amendment number four to House Bill 1001, the reading clerk, please read it in.
House Bill 1001, third reading amendment number four to engrossed copy, page three, lines seven through 14.
Senator Hutchings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move third reading amendment 3004 to House Bill 1001 and ask for your favorable, for your favor on this. And may I ask a question? I would like to bring it up for discussion, but is it possible to withdraw it? I know the senator After the discussion.
Senator, yeah.
I'm asking.
Well, you've announced withdrawal, but we haven't formally done that.
Okay.
So at this point, you can say something, but at the same time on the floor, your intent to withdraw has been noted, so.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Senator Rothfuss. But wait a minute, I think we had Senator Case in front of you, so we're going to
I'm sorry, my apologies.
Well, he had a quiet point of order. When he stands in the corner, it seems to catch one's attention.
I stand here with a small point of order. Certainly would be courtesy for the Senate to allow her to move the motion, move the amendment. We can discuss it. She can withdraw it at the proper time, should she wish. An absent objection at that time, of course, it could be withdrawn.
Sure. Senator Rothfuss, any follow-up today?
Thank you, sir.
Senator Hutchings.
And the reason why I wanted to do that is the good senator behind me had expressed some concerns over the definitions of employer. And I wanted to open it up for discussion to see if this is something that the good senator feels good about this particular definition over the other one. So that was just my desire.
So it's my understanding, then, we can have some discussion. You have been notified, though, it will be withdrawn. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Senator Hutchings.
Since there's no further discussion, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to withdraw that a minute.
Absent objection. Third reading amendment number four to House Bill 1001 has been withdrawn. Folks, I have a note here that we do have some other amendments in the works, but we've got some computer hesitation, is what I'm being told. So we'll just stand at ease until the sound of the gavel. Thank you. Folks, just a brief announcement. It'll, folks, members of the Senate? Members of the Senate, these technical problems will take just a few minutes, so stay close. And I would just note, if I could insert this announcement, I've sent out for sandwiches. Should be about 11:30 when they get here, sandwiches, chips, and drinks. So wherever we are in the process, there will be food in the kitchen. Thank you. With that, stand at ease.
Senate will come back to order. Thank you for your patience. It was a computer, computer problem to get these processed and printed out. Now you have them on your desks. You'll check your desk. Everybody is good? Sergeant of Arms tells us we have a quorum. Let's proceed. Oh, yes. Thank you. Senator Garo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick privilege of the floor.
Please do.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the great honors of my life, of course, is to be a member of this body and be here with you today. But just so happens, there are three other really cool things that happened in my life that I count right up there with them. And they are here with me today. My daughter and Malu, my son Johnny, and my wife Patty, who are all up in the gallery upstairs. If you please welcome.
Could we have the senator's family stand? Welcome to the Senate. We haven't had these nice introductions this time around. So Senator Garo, thanks for bringing your family over across the state. Welcome to the Senate. You have a great dad and senator husband. All right, let's proceed. Fifth reading amendment. Third reading amendment to, third reading amendment number five to House Bill 1001. Please read it in, clerk.
House Bill 1001, third reading amendment number five to engross coffee, page one, line seven.
Senator Bytnan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move third reading amendment number five to House Bill 1001 and ask for your favorable consideration. Ladies and gentlemen of the Senate, this looks familiar. This is the same amendment I put into the Senate version. This deals with the COVID vaccine, vaccine mandates for K through 12 students. And this would allow parents to make that choice whether or not their kids receive this vaccine or not in order to attend public schools. Certainly doesn't prohibit you from, you know, from getting the vaccine. It just gives the parents that choice. I think it's very important with the, what little we know about this vaccine and its effect on children. Some parents are a little bit hesitant to whether or not to give this to their children, and that should be their right to opt out. So if you look at the language, this would add, paragraph C, "The state or county health officer shall grant a waiver to any mandated administration of a COVID-19 vaccine to a person attending full or part-time any public school, kindergarten through 12th grade upon submission of a written request by a child's parent, legal guardian, or other adult authorized to consent to medical treatment of the child seeking the waiver. The state or county health officer shall grant the requested immunization waiver within seven business days of receipt." That's what it does, Mr. President. I know we've already debated this bill or this amendment before. I would simply ask for your favorable consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. We are on third reading amendment number five to House Bill 1001. Senator Landon. Go ahead.
Mr. President, thank you. I, in reading this particular amendment, Mr. President, it, it requires county health officers to grant a waiver no matter what. It, given the way this amendment is constructed, I have a daughter who works in public health. She's got advanced degrees in this stuff. And needless to say, she's smarter than I am. But given that relationship, I believe, Mr. President, that I need to declare a conflict on this vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I asked for a roll call on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the amendment.
Mr. President?
Please do. Senator Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. While I'm very sympathetic to the amendment, in fact, I, I would, I would like to support it. But, Mr. President, our constitution, the Wyoming State Constitution, particularly Article One, Section, Section 24, provides that bill to contain only one subject which shall be expressed in the title, and that no bill, except the general appropriation bills and bills for codification and general revision of law, shall be passed containing more than one subject which shall be clearly expressed in its title. But if, but then it goes on to say that if any subject is not embracing the title, such acts shall be void, to the extent that so much there is not so expressed. Mr., why I'm against this amendment is this bill, you go back and look at the title of the bill, this is a bill about employment and employers and a prohibition with respect to COVID vaccine. This amendment now turns it into a bill that's now about schools and children and students and education. It's far beyond the pale. The body gets to decide, vote it up or down. But I don't know, I can't vote for this because it's clearly, in my estimation, outside the, the limit of the one subject, the one subject and, and, and also Section 20, that no law, no law shall be passed except by bill, and no bill shall be altered or amended on its passage through either house as to change its original purpose. Therefore, all be annulled. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Further discussion on the amendment. Discussion on the amendment. Ready for the question. Question being called. Third reading amendment number five to House Bill 1001. Roll call vote requested.
Roll call on third reading amendment number five. Anderson?
No.
Baldwin?
No.
Bytnan?
Aye.
Boner?
Aye.
Bouchard?
Aye.
Case?
No.
Cooper?
Aye.
Driscoll?
Aye.
Aye. Ellis?
Aye.
French?
Aye.
Burfee? No. Garo?
No.
Hicks?
Aye.
Hutchings? No. James?
Aye.
Kinsky? No. Cole?
Aye.
Cost?
Aye.
Landon? Conflict? McEwen?
Aye.
Nethercutt?
Aye.
Pappas, excuse. Perkins? Perkins?
Perkins, no.
Perkins, no. Rothfuss?
No.
Salazar?
Aye.
Schuler?
Aye.
Scott, excuse. Steinmetz?
Aye.
Wasserberger?
No.
President Docstetter?
Aye.
Closing vote? Closing. Vote closed. On the amendment, 18 aye, 10 no, two excused, one conflict.
Third reading amendment number five to House Bill 1001 has passed the Senate. Third reading amendment number six to House Bill 1001. Senator Byman? Oh, excuse me. Please read it in. Third reading amendment number six to House Bill 1001.
House Bill 1001, third reading amendment number six to engrossed copy, page one, line seven.
Senator Byman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move third reading amendment number six to House Bill 1001 and ask for your favorable consideration. Folks, this deals with masks. We just took care of the vaccine mandate. This one may be a little more controversial, so that's why I put in a separate amendment, so we wouldn't have to divide amendments and get all confused. So here we go. I changed the language from the last attempt on Senate File 103 due to another colleague pointing out the broadness of the amendment. So this has narrowed specifically to COVID-19. So if you read along, this new paragraph would state that "The state or county health officer shall grant a waiver to any mask mandate intended to obey transmission of COVID-19 imposed on a person attending full or part-time any public school or kindergarten through 12th grade upon submission of a written request by the child's parent, legal guardian, or other adult authorized to consent to medical treatment of the child seeking the waiver. The waiver shall be granted within seven business days." So pretty much the same language as the last amendment we just voted on. This deals with mask mandates and the parents having that choice whether or not to send their kids to school with a mask. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We are on third reading amendment number six to House Bill 1001. Discussion, please. Questions?
Mr. President?
Please. Senator Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I won't, I'm just gonna, for the same reason, I'm a no on this for the same reasons I expressed before. And now, not only is it beyond the scope of employers and employment, and it's now into masks, and with, before, we're talking about COVID-19 mandates and obligations in employers and employment, and now this, now we're into, now we're into masks, and again, and it's in schools, and, and that has nothing to do with employers and employees, beyond the one-subject matter, and for the two reasons I cited before, I'm again, I'll be a no on the bill. Thank you, Mr., excuse me, no, I'm gonna, thank you, Mr. President.
Further discussion. Senator Bouchard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to call for the ayes and noes.
Further discussion. Senator Landon.
Mr. President, for reasons stated before, I'll be a conflict on this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Further discussion on the amendment, on the, Senator Wasserberger.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I'm, I'm rising in opposition to this. Essentially, what we're creating here is a situation where the county health officer has to grant the waiver. So in other words, any parent with a student that walks in will receive that waiver. Essentially, the state of Wyoming and its school districts have pulled off some impossible things the last couple of years by having live classes. When other states were still closed down, we were able to have live classes because we required masks, or some districts did. And we're taking that option away from those students and from the school board. And I can honestly tell you that at least in the experiences that I've had going into the schools, and I work closely with schools in my job, the last thing the students want is to go virtual. And if they don't have the mask option, and enough students are sick, and enough students have waivers, then they're going to be forced into a situation of a virtual school. And we can say, well, it's a different political entity. It's the county health officer. But if the county health officer gives enough waivers, and those students are in school, the school board has no alternative but probably to go to a virtual situation. And so I, I think we're, I think we're mandating something that, that the students don't definitely want. And, you know, the students were much better about wearing their masks than adults, because they had lost, they had lost their spring semester. They lost all the things that kids like to do. Prom, graduation, spring sports, spring concerts, spring plays. Those things didn't happen because we had to go virtual. And so the last thing I think we want to do is to force school districts into a situation where they have to. And, and my fear is that, and I agree with the concept that, that parents should have the right, and, and I agree with that. But when it comes down to whether or not their students are actually in school, or whether or not they're home, and I would also say that, you know, students had, because they weren't in school, there were all kinds of mental issues that students had while they were home. And so my, my point is, we're taking an option away. It's the last-ditch option. No district, no school board wants to go to a situation where they have to have virtual schools. And I'll give you the best example of that. I work closely with our alternative high school, with college classes that I offer through, through the program that I direct. And right now, because we were in a virtual school situation for essentially ten weeks, that alternative school has the highest enrollment that it has ever had, and with a waiting list that is much longer than it's ever been. Because students, some of them did great on virtual school. Some of them did incredibly well. They're teacher pleasers. They worked hard. They got their A. Some students did not. And so many, there's a lot of students out there that don't have their credits. And so I think we're going to see a little bit of spike in, or lowering of our graduation rate, which Wyoming should be very proud of its graduation rate. So anyway, I'm really concerned about what we're doing here with this amendment, and I would urge you to vote no.
Further discussions go to Senator Steinmetz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to bring a point of clarification. When we amended the bill to create the codified law yesterday regarding a public entity, it brought several of these titles into play that we didn't have in the bill before. So I just wanted to bring that up as a point of clarification. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Let's go to Senator Cole.
Thank you, Mr. President. I haven't spoke a lot on this special session yet, but I want to take the time and first say to all my colleagues that this isn't personally against anyone. It is just a general thought from a common sense person. We're talking about mask mandates, and I think the part we have never talked about is the dehumanizing effect of wearing a mask, the detriment to the psyche of standing there and not seeing someone's face. I believe we function much better when we understand that. The dehumanizing effect of not having facial expressions, I think, has led to the social media issues that we face today. I think that folks can always wear a mask if they see fit. The parents want to do that. That's certainly their right to do so. But I don't see where it's a net positive effect on the overall experience of humanization of people while they interact in school. Thank you, Mr. President, for my chance to comment.
Thank you. Further discussion, Senator Case.
Well, Mr. President, thank you very much. Mr. President, I guess, you know, the reason for masks is to protect others. That's why you do it. It's important that school districts have this tool. And I just, I think there's a little bit too much hype made out of it. Most districts are offering virtual options for students. That works for me. A lot of anger has been expressed about an incident in Laramie when someone was arrested, and it's alleged that it was for not wearing a mask. That's not true when you read the facts of the story, Mr. President. The truth is, the student had been suspended, returned to school, and was asked to leave, removed for trespassing, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President. Masks protect other people. That's all there is to it. We've managed, we're looking around this room, think about how far we've come with respect to masks right here in this chamber. Why do you think that happened, Mr. President? Why are we not requiring, why is our staff not wearing masks? Why aren't we wearing masks? Probably because of the vaccine, Mr. President, which also, so the world is getting better, Mr. President. And I think we, we need, we've come this far. Our health authorities, our school boards, our law enforcement, and our legislature, and all the citizens of Wyoming have been on this journey together. And actually, we're almost home. We're so far home that we're not even wearing masks on this floor right now. I would advocate that we not approve this amendment. We apply the same thinking perhaps later on when we vote on other issues. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Senator Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to speak on this, but I will. You know, this vote for me is very simple. The question is, who is in control of our children? Who knows what's best for our sons and daughters? Is it parents, or is it government? And the, and, and, and that issue is very clear to me on this vote for this amendment. Thank you.
Further discussion for your second time, Senator Bouchard.
Thank you, Mr. President. That young girl was arrested. She had a constitutional right to be in a school. If you look at the trespass laws, they're not written for that. They're not written to go against somebody like they did. And when you really see where they went against someone, is when you look at the arrest video. And the people that brought her.
Senator, let's, let's have you address the chair. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. President. When you look at that video, she was detained and brought in, and they weren't wearing masks. And it comes down to that, do as I say, not as I do. And I think, so I don't think we're fixed yet. I think we got a long way to go, because there are, there's people in authority that just don't understand the Constitution. And I, so on and for the amendment.
Further discussion. Again, for those listening, we are on third reading amendment number six to House Bill 1001. Further discussion. Ready for the question? Do you want to, you want to go back to Senator Byman? Okay. Ready for the question? Question being called, and I recall we had a roll call request. Yes. This is on third reading amendment number six to House Bill 1001. Chief clerk, call the roll.
Roll call on third reading amendment number six. Anderson?
No.
Baldwin?
No.
Byman?
Aye.
Boner?
Aye.
Bouchard?
Aye.
Case?
No.
Cooper?
Aye.
Driscoll?
Aye.
Aye. Ellis?
Aye.
French?
Aye.
Furphy?
No.
Garo?
No.
Hicks?
Aye.
Hutchings?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Kinsky?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Cost?
No.
Landon? Conflict? McEwen?
Aye.
Nethercot?
Aye.
Pappas, excuse. Perkins?
Perkins, no.
Perkins, no. Rothfuss?
No.
Salazar?
Aye.
Schuler?
Aye.
Scott, excuse. Steinmetz?
Aye.
Wasserberger?
No.
President Docstetter?
Aye.
Closing vote? Closing. Vote closed. On the amendment, 18 aye, 19 no, two excused, one conflict.
Case, go ahead.
Could you read the vote again?
Please do.
It could be 18 to 19.
Yeah.
18 aye, 9 no, two excused, one conflict.
One more time, a little slower.
Certainly. On the amendment, 18 aye, 9 no, two excused, one conflict.
Thank you. Helps for those listening, too. Third reading amendment number six to House Bill 1001 has passed the Senate. Third reading amendment number seven to House Bill 1001. Reading clerk, please read it in.
House Bill 1001, third reading amendment number seven to engrossed copy. Delete all.
Senator Perkins.
Thank you, Mr., Mr. President. I move third reading amendment number seven to House Bill 1001 and ask the body to vote no. Mr. President, what this amendment does is it goes back, and we've talked about how complicated this bill is. And, Mr. President, I think this cuts through all the veil, takes down, takes off all the Band-Aids and says what it really is that 1001 tries to do. And so what this bill does, it simply goes back and changes the bill to something that's very simple. It simply says, "An act relating to the," so this would be the title, yeah, "An act relating to the protection of constitutional rights declaring that federal COVID-19 vaccine mandates or requirements have no force or an effect in Wyoming, providing definitions and providing for an effective date." And so that's what it does. And so all it does is it strips out everything that we've got in 1001, except for the definition of COVID-19 vaccines. That stays in place. And then the bill becomes very simple. If you go to line 24 of the amendment, this is what the bill says, and this is all that it would say. "Any federal laws, regulations, or orders that impose or require that any person receive a COVID-19 vaccine for any reason shall have no force or effect within the geographical borders of the state of Wyoming." Then the only other thing it does is it becomes effective immediately upon sign by law. That's what we all want to say, Mr. President. That's what we all want to do. And why I'm asking to vote no for two reasons. One is, Article Nine of the United States Constitution reads in the second, beginning in the second paragraph, "The Constitution and the laws of the United States which shall be made in pursuance thereof, and all treaties made, or which shall be made under the authority of the United States, shall be the supreme law of the land, and the judges of every state shall be bound thereby, and anything in the Constitution or the laws of any state not contrary, to the contrary notwithstanding." Then the next paragraph, Mr. President, is very important to both us as, particularly to us as legislators. The next paragraph of Article Nine of the United, excuse me, sorry, yes, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm reading from Article Six, Article Nine, from Article Six. The, the second, the third paragraph of Article Six, "The senators and represent, senators and representatives before mentioned," and then this is really important, "and the members of the several state legislatures, and all executive and judicial officers, both, both of the United States and of the several states, shall be bound by oath or affirmation to support the Constitution." Then in our oath, Mr. President, we, we take an oath, when we take our oath of office, which is in our Constitution, which is also, which, which Because the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Wyoming are clear, we don't have the authority to do it. Mr. President, last night, if you watched the news, we saw where the remedy for all of this is. It's in the ballot box. It's in the, it's in the courthouses. If they're exceeding the Constitution either by executive order because of an improper delegation of power from Congress, or the law itself is unconstitutional, that remedy's in the courts. We as the state legislatures are powerless to undo that because we are a law, we are a nation of laws, we are a state of laws, we don't have the right to simply disregard it. So, this is what we'd all like to do, this is what I'd love to do, but you know what? We just can't do it. So, I invite you to join with me in voting no on this amendment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Further discussions, go to Senator Hutchings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, for one, love this amendment. I, for two, respectfully disagree with the previous speaker in that we have no power against the congressional laws. In this case that we're dealing with here with this particular mandate, Congress has made no law in accordance with or in pursuance of Article One, Section Eight, Clauses One through Eighteen of our U.S. Constitution. Congress isn't making laws. Our current executive branch is making the mandates. So, for me, I'm on and for this amendment, Mr. President. Thank you.
Reminder, we are on Third Reading Amendment Number Seven, House Bill 1001. Further discussion. Mr. Vice President.
Mr. President, I don't know whether I'm on and or against this, but I want to speak to the issue of what the amendment talks to and some of the previous discussion about, well, you can't vote for it because we took an oath of office. So, when we read the Constitution, and I appreciate the bringer of this amendment because it provides us an opportunity to actually understand what we're doing here and relative to the United States Constitution. So, the bringer of the amendment is correct. So, if we go to Article in the Supremacy Clause, Article Six, Section Two, or Clause Two, "The constitutional laws of the United States shall be made in pursuit of it therefore shall breathe, shall be the supreme law of the land." That's pretty clear. So, let's go, Mr. Chairman, to what the Constitution says about the ability to write laws. So, you have to go back now, and you have to go to Article One, and you have to go to Section Eight, the last clause, Mr. Chairman. So, now we're talking about what the laws are under the Constitution that the federal government can write. And under that clause, it says to make all laws what shall be necessary and proper or carrying into the exec, execution of the foregoing powers. Mr. President, I'm not going to stand here and tell you that I'm a constitutional scholar because I am not. But, Mr. Chairman, I can read what the constitutional scholars have read from Chief Justice Stories' Commentary on the Constitution, the Federalist Papers. And so, Mr. Chairman, I, or, Mr. President, I am not a constitutional scholar. I'm more of a historian. So, when I have a question, it's as to what did the Constitution actually mean? I go back and read the history of the Constitution. Instead of having somebody tell me what it means, I want to know what it meant when they adopted it and the states have their ratifying convention. The advice by James Madison says, if you want to know what the Constitution says and what it means, you have to go read those ratifying conventions because they debated what it meant at the time. Mr. Chairman, I've done that. So, let me tell you, this necessary and proper clause was the most debated clause at the constitutional conventions of those states. And I would like to tell you, the reason that the states went ahead and ratified the Constitution is because of that discussion, because the anti-federalist sentiment come out and said, oh, here it is, this is exactly what you told us that it wasn't going to do, that the federal government was going to come out and wipe out all state authority. That was the allegation. Well, the rebuttal is, and the prevailing comment, and the reason that they went and adopted it, Mr. Chairman, is because they said, no, that's not what it says. You have to read it in context of the law. And what the Constitution article says under necessary and proper, it says, under that component, if you go to it and read it, it's pretty explicit, the foregoing powers. Those are the enumerated powers that the federal government has. This was the debate. And the debate was, they can't just adopt rules and regulations and laws if it's not under the enumerated powers, those granted to Congress under the Constitution, Mr. President. And, Mr. President, I'm still not going to tell you here what, whether this is constitutional or not, but I would tell you that what they said when they adopted this was not that the supremacy clause governed everything that the federal government wants to do. It was only for those powers that were granted to the federal government under the Constitution. That's what the history tells me. That's what they said at the ratifying conventions. That's the discussion that they had at the time, Mr. President. I believe that's the right interpretation. And I want somebody to show me where in the enumerated powers of Congress or the executive branch, that they have the right and the Constitution ability to come in and mandate what an individual does or doesn't do to their body. I have not found it, Mr. President. Maybe somebody can point that out, but I don't think that is a enumerated power of either the Congress or the Congress or the executive branch.
Senator Case.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I love the Constitution. I love those words. I love the wisdom. I love the Federalist Papers. I love the Constitutional Convention. I love the debate that the states had. I love it. Those words, Mr. President, aren't all of what the Constitution is. The aspect of judicial review came about through a Supreme Court case called Marbury versus Madison. And it had to do with the delivery of appointments and whether the, the process was followed and on and on and on. But it established judicial review. The Supreme Court interprets the Constitution. Now, these, this beautiful language, this simple document that's understandable to us all, is much bigger. The writings on the Constitution would fill this room. The implications of that writing and the rulings of the court, do I agree with it? No, I'm kind of an original constructionist, I think, Mr. President. But I don't get to rule this. The courts already have ruled. Executive orders can have the force of law. Expansion of the Health and Welfare Clause, expansion of the Supremacy Clause. It's not the words, Mr. President, it's the force of law as interpreted by the Supreme Court. That's where we're at. That's why I've stood up here so many times and asked that we consider a constitutional Mr. President, we can read these words, but that's not all there is in the Constitution anymore. It is so much bigger than that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Senator Kinsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with my colleague from the southeast. I, I really like this amendment, and I think it represents one of my colleague from the Windy Cities, the bringer of the amendment, one of his better pieces of work. I think that I support this amendment because what the, this administration has done is unconstitutional for three reasons. The first is with respect to the Tenth Amendment and the sovereignty of the states. And we discussed in prior, prior sessions, prior debates, where Justice Roberts, when he struck down the ACA, said that you cannot blackmail people or the states into compliance with your edicts, which is exactly what you're doing when you threaten people with loss of federal contracts and bankrupting their hospitals. The second reason that's unconstitutional is this. At the federal level, the first controlling document is the Constitution, then laws. Laws must be consistent with the Constitution, then regulations, which have to be consistent with the laws and the Constitution, and then administrative actions interpreting and implying those regulations and laws. You cannot, an administrative action such as an executive order cannot exceed the authority of either a regulation, which in this case there is none, or a law, and I know of no law that allows the president to do these things, or the Constitution, and I'll discuss the constitutionality quickly. The president cannot exceed the authority delegated to him by Congress. And this president clearly has done that, rendering this action unconstitutional. That's the second reason. The third is our evolving views of personal liberty. The president and his supporters cite the Jacobson v. Massachusetts case of nineteen oh seven, that involved a Swedish immigrant who had a bad experience with the smallpox virus in Sweden when he was a boy and didn't want to take it when he lived in Massachusetts. The penalty was a five-dollar fine. The penalty was not bankruptcy. The penalty was not destruction of his business. The penalty was not dismissal from a job they need and loss of a pension. So, this goes far beyond the boundaries of the Jacobson case. Plus, there was a Michigan judge who struck down some of the Michigan COVID regulations on the basis that our, our views of personal liberty have evolved substantially since nineteen oh seven. Is there any question in your mind, or the mind of this president, that if a woman has a right to choose an abortion, a right to choose, which I disagree with, but doesn't it logically follow that a person has a right to choose whether to get a vaccine or not? I believe ultimately, when this ends up in front of the court, that will be one of the bases for finding this entire mandate of the president's unconstitutional and striking it down. And this resolution, this, this amendment, clearly, four-square, calls out exactly what is wrong with these edicts and why we are here today, on and for the amendment.
Senator Nethercutt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good and gracious senators, what an incredible seven days we have spent together, spinning in our white capes and now our black robes, making arguments to the court. I remember hearing criticisms when I was a, a young senator, a young buck, about how I was too lawyerly, about how my speeches on this floor sounded too much like an attorney. That's not what this body is about. And I have learned to temper my tone at times, to not debate the law, because certainly that would rarely be a fair fight.
Let's keep it, let's keep it level here, folks.
I encourage this body to recognize most profoundly what I have asked before. We are so fortunate in this great state and in this great country to have three branches of government. One, the judicial branch, of which these constitutional arguments, of which you are all so eloquently making, are being presented to a court of law, which actually is the body of which we all have agreed to in this great country, to be the determiner of the constitutionality of anyone's actions, including the president's. Our Attorney General, and I underscore bold and italics "our," Attorney General, is acting on all of our behalf to make this fight. The state of Wyoming, through our appropriation of dollars in the tens of millions, has empowered our Attorney General in coordination with our governor and executive branch to fight for the people of Wyoming, to preserve their rights, to enforce their individual constitutional rights. That is where the determination of these issues will be found. That is how this country operates. We are meddling and making a mess of the laws of this state for the businesses and individuals. I urge you to trust the process of all three branches of government which are working. Let the courts do their jobs and determine the constitutionality of these actions.
Thank you. Senator Vice President Hicks.
Mr. President, I think there's wide words in my colleagues from the north, from this area of the state, but I just want to add on to that. And, and I would concur, this should be fought out with one branch of government. But when that happens, that doesn't mean the other two branches of government should just sit on the sideline as casual observers and watch the train go down the track for the ultimate disposition. We do have a responsibility as another branch of government, and our, our responsibility is to write laws. And then if the courts want to infer whether those are constitutional or not, that's the process. So, while I advocate and support my colleagues' assertion that we should allow one branch, which is the judicial branch, to sort this out, what I don't advocate is for the other branch, the legislative branch, is to sit on the side of the road and watch the cars go by, because we have a responsibility and we have certain duties. And it's an interesting thing, if we ever did our duty, Mr. President, there would never be any discussion of constitutionality because we're not writing any laws to be challenged. Do your job, folks. We're the legislative branch. Let the judicial branch do what the judicial branch needs to do. Another comment, Mr. President, I'd like to interject into this discussion, and I understand, and I would concur from my colleague from Fremont County. There is a whole body of constitutional cases, court rulings, it would fill this building. Mr. President, that's an evolutionary process, and unfortunately, it has been bad for this country. The Constitution wasn't supposed to evolve, folks. It's the supreme law of the land. And as we've allowed, to a certain extent, the legislative branch not to assume our responsibility and take responsibility and do what we're supposed to do, which is write laws, we've contradicted our own ability to be able to accomplish that because we've now abrogated our responsibility back to the judicial branch. And here's the fundamental truth, Mr. President, we're all fallible. Even the judicial branch at the highest level of the Supreme Court is fallible. I have no farther to go back and look at the Dred Scott case, and I will tell you, there is many instances in the history of our country where the judicial branch got it wrong. That, why we have three branches of government, Mr. President. We're the legislative branch, and we should do our job, and we should allow the judicial branch to do their job. But at no time should we abrogate our responsibility because we are fallible, and so is the judiciary fallible. We need to do what we think is right and proper, necessary for the state of Wyoming, and uphold our constitutional duties that we all took a hold, took, raised our right hand and swore an oath of office, Mr. President. On and for the amendment.
Thank you. That was your second time, Senator Hutchings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For my second time, I'd like to ask for a recorded vote. Thank you, sir.
Roll call requested. Let's continue. Any further discussion? Question being called. Third Reading Amendment Number Seven.
President, Mr. President, for my second time.
Oh, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. As the bringer of the amendment, I appreciate, I appreciate the, the conversation, Mr. President. I appreciate both sides and what they bring, and obviously, that's why I brought this amendment, is ultimately, I want, if we, if we just go back to what we've already talked about, what the other speakers have talked about, let me read to you, Mr. President, the opening lines of...
is many instances in the history of our country where the judicial branch got it wrong. That why we have three branches of government, Mr. President. We're the legislative branch, and we should do our job, and we should allow the judicial branch to do their job. But at no time should we abrogate our responsibility, because we are fallible, and so is the judiciary fallible. We need to do what we think is right and proper, necessary for the state of Wyoming, and uphold our constitutional duties that we all took a hold, took, raised our right hand and swore an oath of office, Mr. President, on and for the amendment.
Thank you. That was your second time. Senator Hutchings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For my second time, I'd like to ask for a recorded vote. Thank you, sir.
Roll call requested. Let's continue. Any further discussion? Question being called. Third reading amendment number seven.
Mr. President, for my second time?
Oh, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. As the bringer of the amendment, I appreciate, I appreciate the conversation, Mr. President. I appreciate both sides and what they bring, and obviously, that's why I brought this amendment, is ultimately, I want, if we just go back to what we've already talked about, what the other speakers have talked about, let me read to you, Mr. President, the opening lines of the executive order on requiring coronavirus disease 2019 vaccinations that started all this. And he does it this way. He starts out by the authority vested in me as president by the Constitution and the laws of the United States, including section 3301, 3302, 7301 of Title V, United States Code. And then he also does it, he does the same thing when he does the OSHA orders. He does all those things, all of those powers that he's trying to, that the good president, that our president is trying to implicate through his executive orders, are powers that were delegated to him under the Congress of the United States. And he goes right back to what the good vice president talked about in the necessary and proper clause. Is that the necessary and proper clause? Well, who is the folks that get to decide whether it's constitutional or unconstitutional? We can all sit around and we can talk about it being unconstitutional or constitutional, but that's not going to solve the problem. Ultimately, under, has already been cited, the history and the law of this land is ultimately constitutionality of the enactment or enforcement of law, whether it's unconstitutional in its face or unconstitutional in its application is reserved to the courts. It can be state court, it can be federal court, but ultimately, it'll be the courts that decide this. We talk about trusting the process, Mr. President. Mr. President, we need to trust the process. The process isn't just what goes on in this room. The process also, what goes on in the country. We saw last night, the process play itself out in our sister state of Virginia. We saw the process is still playing out in our sister state of New Jersey, where my last, the last chance I looked, it is, that state is within 8,000 votes of who's going to be the governor of that state. The process includes the process at the national level. It proves the process of all the people of the United States who get to voice their vote. It includes the process that we have here. Mr. President, I would rather see this amendment pass and this law going to effect, because what it does is that in large part can take out many of the employers that we've got that will be right caught in the crossfire and the crosshairs and potentially face bankruptcy through litigation or fines or other things. We had an email last night from a, from an association. I got an email from an association director who said, who told me quite frankly, "My association is subject to the federal regulation of the activity that we undertake. If they come out with a vaccine mandate, we have no choice but to follow that or shut down. We will have no choice but to defy the state law." Is that what we want to do to our people? At least with this amendment, you could take, maybe take some of them out of that. Vote your conscience on this, folks, but my estimation, I'm not a constitutional scholar, but I am a lawyer. I've been a lawyer for 30 years. I went to school, I graduated near the top of my class, not that that makes any difference 30 years later. My estimation is, and we'll find out, because it's not going to be long, we'll talk more about this when we back on the bill, but vote your conscience on this, but this is a better amendment, to have the bill look like this than the bill looks now. I'm still a no, because I believe it violates my constitutional oath to both the United States Constitution and the Wyoming Constitution. Thank you, Mr. President.
We've heard from the, we've heard from the sponsor. Question being called. Roll call requested. Third reading amendment number seven to House Bill 1001. Clerk, please recall the roll.
Third reading amendment number seven, roll call. Anderson?
Aye.
Baldwin?
No.
Bittman?
No.
Boner?
No.
Bouchard?
No.
Case?
No.
Cooper?
Aye.
Driscoll? Driscoll?
Senator Driscoll?
Aye.
Driscoll, aye. Ellis?
Aye.
French?
No.
Furphy?
Aye.
Garou?
No.
Hicks?
Aye.
Hutchings?
Aye.
James?
No.
Kinskey?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Cost?
Aye.
Landon?
No.
McCune?
No.
No. Nethercutt?
No.
Pappas excused. Perkins?
Perkins, no.
Perkins, no. Rothfuss?
No.
Salazar?
No.
Schuler?
No.
Scott excused. Steinmetz?
No.
Wasserberger?
No.
President Dogstetter?
No.
Closing vote? Cooper, aye to no. Closing... Vote closed on the amendment. Nine, aye. Nineteen, no. Two excused.
Third reading amendment number seven to House Bill 1001 has failed the Senate. There are no more amendments. We're back on the bill. Discussion, Senator Boner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Back on this bill, I've been thinking a lot about the good discussion we had, especially the one that we had previously. And I'm not an attorney, I'm not going to try to pretend to be one. I'm here because my constituents want me to be here. And I've got to say the same thing I've told all of them, is we're going to try and do something to save people's jobs and push back against this federal overreach, but I can't guarantee success. So, Mr. President, I think we have a good faith effort here, but just want to take a little bit of time to explain, as somebody who's had opportunity to be a part of some efforts, as a state lawmaker who has been successful in pushing back and changing federal policy. And we're people on this floor, the good vice president, the chair of the travel, record, and wildlife, we've all dealt with the issue dealing with the way the federal government issues oil and gas leases and split state situations. That took a lot of effort, took meeting after meeting. It took a lot of discussion with people who disagreed with us. Didn't take a bill, there's not a bill in sight, not a special session in sight. It took a favorable administration that agreed with what we're trying to do, and only then, after a year of effort, did we finally see some personnel changes within federal land management agencies, important personnel changes, and changes to Department of Interior Policy, concrete changes. We talked about another instance, dealing with signing wind turbines around nuclear launch facilities. A good chair of the Judiciary Committee, we worked on that, we worked hard. There was a bill. I don't think it did anything, but the good thing was, the threat of that legislation got opposing parties together at the same table, and they figured it out. So, Mr. President, having that perspective, I can't say that I'm selling for the bill, but I just want to say clearly and publicly, we've tried. We'll see if it has an effect. And vote your conscience on this one, ladies and gentlemen. I think we understand, hopefully, what we're capable of as state lawmakers, what we're not after this week. Like I said, vote your conscience, I'll be voting aye, but certainly understand if my colleagues have different opinions.
Question is now on the bill, House Bill 1001 for third reading. Further discussion, Senator Landon.
Mr. President, thank you. I think, I think I've articulated several times my concern over what this might do to the healthcare industries in our state, our institutions that rely so heavily upon, you know, the federal dollars that come in to take care of our people who are arriving still today in quite numbers at the emergency rooms. But there's another piece that, that quite frankly, it's just another piece of why I don't have my arms around what we're doing with this bill. And I can't state it any better than a good friend of mine who sent me the following. And I apologize, I'm not seeing as well as I should, but he said, "Does House Bill 1001, does it in any way negate Wyoming's at-will employment rules? Could I just lay someone off using the at-will, remain silent, and go on with my life as a federal contractor? Also, when you indicated that the state would have my back against federal mandates, does that mean that if I am sued by an employee, the state will help me with my legal fees? Or if bucking the vaccine mandate has the federal government vacate my federal contract, the state will continue to pay me the contracted amount that I will lose? It appears that HB 1001 will apply to my association unless our federal funds are threatened, OSHA laws require it, or our federal contracts require compliance. In other words, you get the idea, Mr. President. There are all kinds of concerns like this out there. This was just one email that I got, and I'm not talking about the cut and paste that we received 100 of. I'm talking about emails like this one, where business owners and those in our workforce are reaching out to say, "What, what in the world does, does this bill do?" Well, what it does, it puts our businesses at conflict with state law at the expense of federal law. It puts a state mandate in place of a federal mandate. All of the above is part of the reason why I was afraid we'd end up right here, Mr. President. I have some real concerns with this bill, and the advocates, the advocates for this bill could help me by explaining what exactly does this bill do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Further discussion on the bill? Further discussion on the bill. Senator Case.
Mr. President, this corner is kind of vocal right now, but, Mr. President, I wonder about the optics of what we're doing. You know, Wyoming is probably in the greatest transition we've ever faced, as fossil fuels are becoming a thing of the past, whether you agree with it or not, and our economy is changing, and how we're going to live and pay and enjoy the vigor that we've enjoyed in this great state in the years going forward as our economy is ripped out from underneath us. We desperately need to be a good place for business. We desperately need new blood, new businesses to come into the state, and our home-based businesses to thrive and grow. If you're a business person, a major employer, multinational, multi-state business, what is your read on what we're doing? I think your read is that you're making it harder, more confusing, and more difficult, and that Wyoming is not really a good place to think about being part of the future, because it's not going in the right direction, and because it's not consistent, and because frankly, sometimes when the legislature gets together, it's a little scary. Mr. President, I oppose this.
Thank you. Further discussion on House Bill 1001. Senator Anderson, then we'll come back to the screen. Senator Anderson.
Mr. President, on and against the bill, the Minerals and Economic Development Committee works hard on trying to promote businesses in this state and bring them to the state. I think this bill will kill a lot of our opportunity to bring businesses into the state, and it'll probably kill some of the businesses in the state. So for that reason, I'm against this bill.
Thank you. Let's go to the screen. Who was it that was calling there? Senator Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. On and against this bill, you know, I can certainly renew the things that we just talked about on the last amendment, but just to amplify a little bit, Mr. President, Mr. President, I talked with someone I've known for many, many years who, for many years, who heads up a business enterprise, operates, doesn't own it, but operates it. Talked to them quite a bit the last two, last two evenings about this bill and what it does, what it doesn't do. And ultimately, what I can tell you, that if this bill passes, we, that, that business operator, that employer, if this bill passes and the governor signs it the day that it becomes law, within two days of when this becomes law, that, that employer will file suit in federal district court to set aside the constitutionality of, on this, to set aside this law on the, on the basis of preemption or that it violates the supremacy clause. It's unenforceable. If you, if we had taken the time, if we, you know, you've had many people talk to you this week about, about preemption, which is really another way of saying supremacy clause. Mr. President, it's not much different. We, we just passed an amendment that said that local school boards no longer have the ability to control what happens in their classrooms with respect to COVID vaccines or masks. And so what we're doing in large part is very similar. If they simply pass now a resolution in their county or in their school district that said, "We don't have to follow whatever the enactment of House Bill 1001 is," because, by golly, we're in charge of us, we have local control, you can't come into our district and tell us what to do. But yeah, well, that's what we've done. So I'm, I'm just, I'm now entering the 20th year of holding elected office, not all of it in, in the, in the Wyoming legislature. I've never seen, I've never seen an overreach by state government to regulate business as egregious as this is. It doesn't push back on the federal government. It ends up with Wyoming employers suing about a law that we passed in federal district court in the District of Wyoming to set aside a law that we passed, that we said would help them, that's going to put them in court. And then who has to defend that? Our Attorney General is going to go down and have to defend that lawsuit, because there's a basis, or there's a presumption that all laws passed by the legislature constitution will begin with. Do you know why, Mr. President, that doesn't always work? It was just a few years ago, we went down this road, and we did a, we did a bill that had to do with digital trespass. We did it twice. We lost twice. The bill was unconstitutional. Well, okay, fair enough, it's unconstitutional, but that's $600,000 in taxpayer fees approximately to deal with and resolve that case. So these things aren't free to the state. They're not free to the people who have to, to deal with them, and it's not going to be the federal government that's in court, Mr. President. It's going to be our, the employers of the state, and it's not just going to be multinationals. It's going to be folks that are born here, raised here, and have their employers here. Mr. President, we talked about, and I've learned of a, of a road contractor that lives up in the north central, northern part, north part of the state, northwestern part of the state, who is made the determination that he, that they will not bid on federal contracts because of the federal, the COVID vaccine requirement. And it's not that he can't make the certification, Mr. President, that they won't make the certification. They won't impose that on their employees. Mr. President, that's America. That's how it's supposed to work. It's not us making the decision for every employer. The employers get to make those decisions for themselves. And if we should anything, we should help them. We should appropriate money to pay their legal fees to have their back. But this just adds another layer of bureaucracy and government that they have to deal with. It's not good for Wyoming. It's, it's going to be set aside by the, I would, my prediction is by the end of the year, it will be state or there'll be an injunction against the state enforcing this because it's so blatantly out of our lane. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Further discussion on the screen. Senator Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd rather not talk about it. This has probably been the most contentious and difficult issue we've ever dealt with since I've been here, and it's truly interesting. And I'm going to reiterate a question that was asked earlier, and my vote depends on the answer of it, and that is, if we pass this bill, and this is for everyone out there that's voting for it, if we pass this bill, are we actually going to save any of the jobs that fall under the federal mandate, the people that are, and I'm being inundated, not with the junk emails, with people actually that care, that are either federal employees or medical employees that are faced with losing their jobs because of this mandate. My question is, if we pass this, are we actually going to save, can any of you look them in the eye and say, "You're not going to lose..." Can any of you look them in the eye and say, you're not going to lose your job? Because I can tell you, should we pass this, we've heard testimony this morning, and I've had calls from business inside my district. If we pass this, without a doubt, there's going to be jobs lost because of the bill we passed. And that's a balancing act we all have to do. But we all need to understand, either direction we move, there may be jobs that go away. But I want someone to tell me that this bill is actually going to accomplish what we're trying to do. Absent an answer, I'm a no vote. If you can tell me equivocally that this is actually going to save anybody's job at a hospital, a federal employee or a federal contractor, then I'm probably going to be a yes vote, and we may lose some other jobs because there's going to be jobs lost either way. But I've not once heard anyone that's a major proponent tell me that this bill's actually going to effectively accomplish anything other than part of my neighbors and friends losing their jobs because they can't do business anymore because of the bill, the way it's structured. So I'll step back and wait for an answer, but this vote's going to be a pretty close vote, and my vote hinges on good answers. Thank you.
Further discussion on the bill? Further discussion on the bill? Senator Hutchings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just quickly, I agree with the two speakers before me, and I wanted to bring out the individual citizen. We're talking a lot about businesses, 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 but you can't have a business without people helping you run that business. And if employees are being forced to take a vaccination they don't want to take, but they want to keep their jobs to support their families, we have information out there that the vaccine is not that safe. Not everybody can take the vaccine and handle it. We're talking about jobs being lost. We also need to think about lives being lost, people going to the hospital because they get the vaccination. We have a list on the website that was mentioned by a doctor in the committee that shows people are getting shingles, Bell palsy, having heart issues, paralysis, and the list goes on, heart attacks. People are dying from this vaccination. So even if we pass, don't pass this bill, which I'm not really certain where I'm going to go on my vote, but we have to think about those individual citizens and their concerns. An employer being able to tell somebody, you will take this vaccination or not work with me, and they take it, and the next day they die, what's that going to do? What's that going to do to, what is it going to do to our cities and towns when police officers, firefighters, medical workers are no longer there? Just a thought. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Further discussion? Over to Senator Groo, who stood first, and then it will go to Senator Bynum.
Thank you, Mr. President. As was said before, it's been a heck of a week. And you've heard me talk a lot about business and what I think this bill does to business and part of the reasons why I'm against it, but that's been well articulated by my friends from around the state in previous speeches. Today, I'd like to talk about what I think is the underlying issue, and actually it was just brought up by my good friend from here in the capital city, and what I think is at the essence of this bill. Fear. Fear of a pandemic that came like a thunderbolt out of a clear blue sky. Mr. President, who would have thought, just 24 months ago, that we'd even be talking about this? It's come at us from every corner of the earth, from every city, every town, every state. It's killed our friends. It's killed our loved ones. It's pit. Member of this, a member of this institution, friends in this room hospitalized. All at the hands of something that we can't see and we can't touch. Fear. We want to lash out at that fear. We get different signals from our government. One day, wear a mask. The next day, no, don't wear a mask. No, now we have to wear two. No, now we don't. And we don't know what the right answer is because it's evolving so fast with a disease that we don't understand. Do we have all the information that we need to make viable decisions? No. We do our best. Fear. So it's insidious. There's that fear. Then there's a political fear. Fear, we get sent down by folks, dang it, that say, come down here and do something. Some say it should be in the courts. We argued today. We heard our back row talk about, you know, famous cases, Jacobson, Marbury versus Madison, Dred Scott, and of course, now the most famous, the 2021 case of Hicks versus Case. All talking about how we should address this problem. Once again, fear. We talk about mask mandates. We talk about school boards. We talk about the same thing. We all want to protect our children. Of course we do. My family's in the gallery today. I got a chance to introduce them, but I think about them too, just as you do. The question is, is this the vehicle to allay that fear? Unfortunately, Mr. President, I have to say no. I don't see this as the vehicle. I wish it was. I think we've tried. Every member in this room has tried their best. I believe that in my heart, that they've done their best to try to address that fear, to try to be able to go home and say, boy, we took care of that fear for you. But I think this bill's come up short. I can't support it for the business reasons, like I say, that were articulated, but at the heart, it will not fix that fear. It won't alleviate that fear. In another place, in another time, maybe so. Friends of the 66th, we have many great things to do ahead of us. We're going to have a budget session here very soon and have great, great opportunities ahead. I look forward to working with you on that. But today, on this bill, I say no. Thank you, Mr. President.
Senator Bynum?
Thank you, Mr. President. On and for the bill as amended. We hear a lot about trust the process, sausage making, the whole nine yards. We hear it all the time. We had a really good Senate bill last Friday that went down that I thought was better than what we have now, but we have this, one of these pre-selected vehicles that were given to us, rank and file members, to make it happen, right? Make it work. If you don't like something in there, amend your stuff into it. That's what we did. We've been working our tails off, trying to make this the best it can be. To answer the Vice President's question, to give him a good reason to vote for it, well, sir, your name's on the bill. And the bill as written when it first started out, prohibiting employers in Wyoming from requiring COVID-19 vaccinations. The bill as engrossed from the House, prohibiting employers in Wyoming from requiring COVID-19 vaccinations. The bill as amended right here on third reading today, prohibiting employers in Wyoming from requiring COVID-19 vaccinations. It's all still there, Mr. President. It's all in the bill. There's some other things we got into the bill I think are good, some not so good, but it is the bill. It is the process. We need to send this down the hall for their concurrence. They probably won't concur. Who knows? Conference committees will go to work, and we'll see what we have later today. But to kill this bill and not even give it an opportunity to go back down to the House or down the hall does a huge disservice to our constituents, who I mind, let me remind you, they're watching. They're watching. They want action. If this was all just a charade to, you know, run us all down different rabbit holes, and then at the end of the day, we're going to kill the bill and say, oh, we tried, but we couldn't get anything done. Mr. President, that's a disservice. I think this body is better than that. We need to continue this process, send this bill on down the hall, strap in and get to work later this afternoon on conference committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Both of you stood at the same time. We're going to defer to Senator Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to talk a little bit about trust in our federal courts. You might recall that last December, we all received a report that we issued and wanted to see the results of conducted by our very own university, which looked at how dependent Wyoming was on its natural resource and extractive industry. Specifically, we were concerned about a possible moratorium or ban on oil and gas leasing on federal lands. And so in December of 2020, we received that report, and it was pretty sobering. An outright drilling ban would constitute a significant shock to the Wyoming economy, reducing our taxes, revenue, income, and employment. The study had a lot of data included, particularly identifying that Wyoming, over a course of one presidential administration, would lose an average of 15,000 jobs annually and lose cumulatively $8.3 billion in GDP. That report had a lot of important information, and what did we see happen in January of 2020? This administration, this presidential administration, issued a moratorium on federal land, oil, and gas leases. We were in session at the time. I think some of us were following what was happening. And what was our legislative response? Did we run bills telling these energy companies disregard the executive order? If you don't follow this federal order, we're going to impose penalties and fines on you? No. What happened was, our governor filed a lawsuit in our federal district court here in our state, 13 other states banded together, and there was another lawsuit in a sister state along the Gulf Coast. And they, all of the arguments of why the act was illegal, they looked at the Mineral Leasing Act, the National Environmental Policy Act, the Administrative Procedures Act, and with the stroke of a pen, a federal judge said, no, this executive order is not enforceable. It violated law. So there's a lot of relief out there, I think, in our most important industry of the power that our federal courts have. With a stroke, one signature by a federal judge, that order was put away. Mr. President, I am very concerned about the situation we're in, concerned about individual liberties, choices. We're in a bad situation. My concern is, are we making a bad situation worse? Are we inserting ourselves into a process where we won't have a meaningful outcome? I don't agree with all of the mandates coming out of Washington, DC, but am I concerned about what that does in our private sector? Absolutely. And the jobs that that provides. We haven't seen the rule yet. As someone who likes to read those kind of rules, I'd like to know what we're fighting, and that's been something we've been battling this whole session. What exactly are we fighting? Things we've read in the news. When it comes to writing law, we need to react to what actually has been in orders. Going back to that order banning or imposing the moratorium on federal leases, I can tell you, groups of attorneys across the state and across the country, we're reading every single word. And in looking at the Constitution, statutes, rules, and case law, they put together some really significant arguments. If this overreach is as bad as it seems, I think we will have the tools in the future to put those rules to bed or put this order to bed if and when it comes. But unless and until then, Mr. President, we're guessing at the solution, and along the way, we can cause a lot more harm. And for those reasons, Mr. President, I can't support this bill.
Thank you, Senator Case.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, we're all talking to Wyoming today, and I think it's important that we try to be as accurate as we can be, especially about things like the vaccine, about the effects of COVID-19 and the impacts across the state. There are numbers. You're more likely, Mr. President, to survive COVID-19 if you've been vaccinated. Most of the people severely ill in our hospitals right now are unvaccinated. Mr. President, overall, the poor outcomes and adverse impacts of the vaccines itself, according to the medical profession and the studies, are relatively minor. Yes, indeed, there have been adverse reactions, and people have died, as I understand it, but not very many, Mr. President. We need to, you know, let the people of Wyoming look at the scientific literature, talk to the medical profession, talk to the people that understand and know. And yes, I know that not all medical professionals believe in vaccination or support policies like masks and vaccination, but, Mr. President, I assure you that most of them do, and I've heard from them, and you've heard from them. I respect them. It's just important, yes, you can still hear what I'm saying and be afraid to take the vaccine, and that's your choice, and I support you. And, Mr. President, I do not, I do not support the federal mandate. I do not. But, Mr. President, everybody's got to make up their own minds, and you do not have a right to work for an employer. An employer has a property right in their business as well, Mr. President. So it's a tussle to get this all figured out. But we must go and figure it out, not with junk that comes about on the internet that's passed around 1,000 times about data that doesn't exist. We have to embrace the best knowledge available, make the best decisions we can, and we have to have those kind of discussions here on the floor of the Senate, and so that the people of Wyoming hear that and also know that basically, the vaccine's pretty safe. If you're going to survive COVID, you're better off to be vaccinated, Mr. President. Masks work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Senator McKeon?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we discuss this bill, I'm kind of scratching my head. The bill isn't about if vaccines are effective. It isn't about whether masks are effective. I think the issue we're trying to solve here is everybody's constitutional right to choose. And in some cases, it would appear that we're trying to take that right to choose away from them. So I think when you look at this, you need to look at the effects of what their choices are versus how well the vaccine works or why we need to wear masks. Thank you, Mr. President.
Q? Let's go with Senator Burchard and then to Senator Shuler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to address the statements about the courts. I mean, we, I, we were told earlier that we should, we can't do something because the courts will say no. We've been told that we have to trust the courts. We say that they make the constitutional stand. They're the last person or the last place in the loop. So I would hope, Mr. President, that I have a little bit leeway here because I want to talk specifically about things that happened here in Wyoming.
Senator, keep it brief. We're moving on. This bill is carrying on, and it's reaching a point where we'll want to come to a vote here soon, so just keep it brief and concise.
Mr. President, I'll keep it pretty tight. 1986, our Supreme Court said you don't have a right to bear arms. And they based it on a decision partly because they had an argument that another state to the east of us, that they could do it. They could say, no, you don't have a right to bear arms. What's most interesting is, is in that case, they looked at a state, used them as an example, and that state doesn't have the same constitutional protections that this state does. And when I went to the Supreme Court and And when I went to the Supreme Court and asked if I could listen to the audio, they said it had been destroyed. But even if it was there...
Senator, let's, let's bring it back into the bill.
It is in the bill, Mr. President, because they said that even if they, if I could hear that tape, or even if it was there, it wasn't for me to listen to, that they had made their decision. In 2011, the legislature basically undid what they had said in these court cases, and we gave the people protection in this state by saying they don't need to ask their government permission to carry in this state. And that's kind of what we're talking about here. That's what we're doing here. This is the seat of power. We are the ones that right the wrongs as well. And I think it's very important that we send that message out up here, that we want to right the wrongs that we see happen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll keep mine short as well. I know we've all bashed this bill around a lot. It's a bill that I'm not really fond of. I think there've been some other bills that, you know, maybe I would have liked a little better than this, but I've sort of felt like a ball inside a pinball machine this week. You know, we amend this and it makes it a little better, and then we amend that and it makes it worse, and then we amend this, and then it starts being a little more palatable. And it's, it's been tough because I, I really can't speak for or against it right now. I'm still kind of on the middle, sitting here going, what to do, what to do? And so a, as, as our good folks have talked about today, I think this comes down to kind of a battle between individual rights, business rights, you know, what is we, our state, the lawmakers going to do about this, you know, federal mandates, the Constitution. There, there's so many things to consider here and that, and I've struggled with it. And I was just reading through some things and there was one quote from Benjamin Franklin that kind of maybe said what I needed to hear. And he said, "Those who can give up essential liberty to obtain a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." And I thought, hmm, maybe that's, maybe I read that because it means that maybe I need to just err on the side of the people. We the people and the fact that their liberty and their individual rights, maybe that's really what trumps all. And even though I don't care for this bill and I'm not sure that when the vote comes up that I can vote for it, but I think, I'm going to, if I do, it's going to be because of the folks that I represent. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator. Further discussion. Senator Kinskey and then to Senator Cooper. No, Senator Kinsey deferred to you, Senator Cooper, it's all yours.
A lot of very eloquent speeches by very...
Senator, could we have you twist your mic over there?
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
A lot of very eloquent speeches by a lot of very learned people here. I'm, I'm learning a lot as we go. I was a sponsor on this bill originally. We've got a couple of different bills here, I've seen three or four iterations of it. They vary a lot from where we really started. We tried to bring forward a balance between business and employees. I think we got away from that a little bit. The losers in the bill, as we see today, are probably the employers. The losers in this situation, if we don't pass this bill, are the employers and the employees. There's not a win in this anywhere. Our employers, if, if we don't pass this bill, whether we do or don't, are being coerced by, by our federal government. They're being forced into being the vaccine police with OSHA. What's happening to them is absolutely wrong. What we're going to do to them is, is not perfect, but it's no worse than what the government's doing than our federal government's doing to them at this time. It makes the employers the enemy, no matter what we do. There's, there's not a win in it. So we've got to do a little bit to maybe protect some of the employees. We're losing jobs either way, we're losing jobs today. We're losing employers today. I'm going to, I'm going to vote for this bill in the interest of consistency. It's what my constituents want. We've done some things with it to make it better, we've done some things with it that hurt a little bit, but I personally have to stay with the bill. I'm afraid, no matter what we do, it's going to end up in the courts. We're going to have to leave it in the hands of the courts, but we have to make a best effort to do something to protect the employees. Every liberty we give up, with the stroke of a pen, we have to go get back with the point of a gun, and I'd rather not give those liberties up to date. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator. Let's go back to Senator Kinskey and then to Senator Wasserman.
Thank you, Mr. President. On and against the bill? The world has turned upside down when a conservative legislature in a conservative state opposes a liberal president's wrong-headed mandate by proposing a well-intentioned but equally overreaching mandate of its own, but does zero to stop that president's mandates, but puts business in the crossfire, jobs at risk, and pits conservative against conservative. We all represent businesses, employers, which represent jobs and people. Those businesses and employers like me, like you, neither like the president's order nor and do not favor mandates either from him or the Wyoming Legislature. They are in danger of being bankrupted by the conflict between the two. Our test for this bill should be, does it stand up to and oppose the executive order of the president without hurting jobs, companies and Wyoming people? This bill fails that test, and I would urge you to vote no with me. Thank you.
Senator Wasserman.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I, I don't know if I've ever seen in all the years I've been in the legislature, a situation that's more difficult than this issue, where we pit employees against employers. And I've heard from both sides. And it's 50/50, so I'm going to make some of my friends happy and some of them upset. But my real issue with what we are doing in this entire session is because I see this as a constitutional issue. Does the President of the United States have the authority to order that all employees with, or employers with 100 employees to require a vaccination? And it seems to me that that is unconstitutional, that it's federal overreach. But I don't see this body as being the appropriate place to make that decision because we have three equal branches of government and the judicial branch decides constitutional issues. What I can promise my constituents is that I will do everything that I can to fund the Attorney General's office in this lawsuit, to make sure that they have everything that they need. And Friday of last week, our Attorney General, at the direction of our governor, filed lawsuit against the federal government. And quite frankly, that's the best we can get. I mean, we could have come down here and done a resolution. We could appropriated funds to the Attorney General's office to fight it, but I don't see this body being effective in fighting that issue to the extent that our executive branch and our Attorney General came. The other part of it is, I see so many risks in the bill that we're passing, that we could lose Medicare funding, we could lose Medicaid funding, we could lose Head Start funding, we could lose the amount of funding that we receive in YDOT for a roads. We could lose even funding for our airports. And, and so at the end of the day, even though I see this as federal overreach, I'm going to have to vote no on this bill because I don't see it doing what we want it to do. I do see our Attorney General with a good shot at winning that lawsuit. And so I would ask you to vote no.
Senator Steinman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to talk today because I've talked so much at this microphone over this process, but I've also been the one sitting at all the committee meetings as appropriations met on this bill and been just intimately involved with most of the amendments. So I want to point something out. The Kinskey amendment that he put in in appropriations is still in the bill, which says, "Subject to the provisions of this section, the provisions of Section 2, which is almost everything of this act shall not be enforced until the date of final disposition." So nothing's happening until the lawsuit is decided, as of right now with the way this sits. But the reason I'm voting for this bill now, the way it's come out, is because of what we did yesterday with including a public entity. And we said that a public entity, no public entity shall require a person to receive or show proof of a COVID vaccine for the person to receive or qualify for any public benefit to which the person is entitled. So we have done that. That is in the bill and that is good. And now today, with some pretty good majorities, we have passed the provisions for protections for our kids in school, for their parents to be able to make their healthcare choices. And that, to me, is a great value to this bill. It may not be perfect, but we are not through the process yet, colleagues of mine. We still have another body down the hallway that will either concur or not concur, and then we may go to conference committee on the bill. And then you'll have the opportunity for your final vote to decide how it truly comes out and if, if it merits your vote or not. So I would urge you, as my colleague behind me always says, not to kill the good for the perfect. And with that, Mr. President, I am an eye on the, on the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the bill. Senator Roth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, there's been a lot of good debate, and obviously there are, I think, diverse views and opinions and considerations and concerns with regard to this bill draft. I think everyone knows I'm on and against the bill draft, but there are a couple of points that came up that I, I did want to address because I think it's important to understand that this is not a clear case of pitting businesses against employees. I think we do know, and we've heard loud and clear from all of our state's businesses, that they oppose this legislation. But the reason there seems to be support in this chamber is that, well, we want to protect the individuals, we want to protect those individual rights, those constitutional rights. That asserts that there's universality in what needs to be protected there, that all of the people, all of the employees, all of our schoolchildren, all of the people that work in our schools and work in our businesses, all share this idea that they need freedom from vaccination, that they need freedom from masks. Mr. President, that's just not the case. That is a complex issue as well. We certainly, we all know, we have individuals in this state that would like and prefer not to be vaccinated. We know that we have individuals in this state that would prefer not to wear a mask. Mr. President, at the same time, we have individuals that would like everyone to be vaccinated so they can feel healthy when they go to their workplace and safe and secure. And we feel the same way about masking, that there are individuals that don't want themselves to be masked, quite frankly, to be candid, they want the people around them to be masked. We've had this discussion. Masking is about protecting others, it's not about protecting you. So the idea that there is this conflict or tension between the businesses and the employees and that all the employees uniformly are shaking their fists at the businesses is just not accurate. If this is a circumstance where we want to be protecting everyone's rights, it's going to be a challenge because people do not agree uniformly on what rights they want protected. I have significant constituencies in my community that elected a school board, and that school board, in representing them, has enacted a masking mandate that has kept our students safe. That was a duly-elected governing body that listened to a ridiculous number of hours of testimony before voting to conclude that that was in the best safety, health and educational interests of our students. At this point in time, this bill takes that away from them. So this is not electing for individual rights, this is choosing winners on who gets their rights respected, on who gets to have their constitutional rights validated and upheld while casting aside those that feel different, Mr. President. If only it were so clear-cut. If only we could choose individual rights over businesses, I think everybody in here knows I'd probably be on the individual rights side. I typically am. But it's not so clear this time. Another thing, Mr. President, that we know, which has me concerned, is this idea of lawsuits, this belief that we will be suing the feds and we will be on the righteous side. But one thing that hasn't come up, which occurred to me recently, is when our businesses are confronted with a circumstance where they have differential laws, they have mandates from the feds and they have mandates from the state, who do those businesses sue? Do you think they're going to sue the feds? If I wanted inductive relief, I wouldn't file a case against the federal government, I'd file against the state of Wyoming. The AG's office is not just going to be filing suits, they're going to be defending suits. You can rest assured, unless those businesses simply want to leave the state because it would be cheaper. I've mentioned some of the businesses in my community that have multimillion-dollar federal contracts. If we pass this legislation, I'm not sure whether they stick around. It would be a real loss for my community. Those employees that work there are not shaking their fist and saying, we need to stop this company from telling us what to do. Honestly, Mr. President, they're thankful for their jobs. They enjoy working for that company. I don't hear them complaining to me. This bill is harmful for the state of Wyoming. It's well-intentioned, but it does not achieve those intentions. It does not achieve those objectives. It is simply shaking our fists, but doing it in a way that harms our businesses and our people and continues to increase the risk to them of harm through health and, health and safety standards that, that are not sufficient, Mr. President. And for that reason, I would encourage all of you to join me in voting no.
Senator Driscoll for your second time, and then we'll back to Senator Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just going to do a few explanations of points that have come off the floor. It was insinuated off the floor that leadership picked all the bills. And I want the record to stand very clearly that leadership came into this session with one bill, is what we ended up with. And the other two bills we came with were both individual bills. One of them from the person that, that insinuated they were leadership bills. They were both individual bills, they both made it to the leadership list out of the 10 or more bills that we had. Our body chose the bills that we took out. Leadership suggested three, one that had come from them, two that came from the body, and we voted on all of those collectively. Any of them could come. I did absolutely suggest that they mend in as they could because we knew when we started, we only had the ability to do two or three bills. But I find this roundly splitting ourselves apart and painting different pieces into different parts, and that's not how this body functions. We sit on the floor and make decisions as a group collectively, and we all live with what we've done. And I'm proud of the process we do. Our body always recognizes when someone stands up, they want to bring it in. There was no attempt to not bring those bills up. to not bring those bills up. They were all voted on. So with that being said, I think it's really important as we all go out that we stick to the facts of what actually happens and goes on. We've done our very best to deal with an incredible hard issue, and I think we've all found that there is no easy answer to this. And with that, I ask everyone, vote your conscience and hold no malice towards other senators, other representatives, or other people upon a final vote. Everyone is doing the very best they can. And it's absolutely imperative that our body continue to function as a body, not as diverse groups. That's what Washington does. With that, I really encourage everyone to vote your conscience and accept the results for what they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to Vice President Hicks.
Mr. President, I think there's some real confusion of what the bill does and doesn't do at this period of time. So, Mr. President, I think I need to walk the body before that, before we vote. So I think my colleague from the land of Goshen tried to articulate that. So there's two provisions in there. There's non-codified section and there's a codified section. There's a sunset date, and then there's also this other provision comes in. So let's talk about the implication of what this bill now does as it is today that you're going to be voting on does to employers. Nothing. It does absolutely nothing. It might create some uncertainty, but what are the punitive things that are going to happen a result of this bill? Mr. President, without some of the previous amendments that were put on there today, I was a no vote on this bill because it did nothing. And it did nothing because it says on subsection A of this provision, "Shall not be enforced until the date of the final disposition resolution, a pendency of any federal litigation." So, Mr. President, this law doesn't even go into effect until we've exhausted all remedies in the federal court system. So let's assume we get to the point where we get to the federal court system. Do we understand how long that takes? We filed already a lawsuit. It could be years before there's a final disposition on that, Mr. President. So under that scenario, let's run that through. So I would take you to page 10, line 11. "Section 2 of this act is repealed on March 31st of 2023." We may not even have had our day in court yet, Mr. President, and this non-codified section goes away. So until that time, nothing happens. This law doesn't go into effect until the final disposition of any court case. But it goes out of date. It's done. The likelihood that this is going to be a law that goes on the books, that infects an employer or protects an employee's rights is highly unlikely. In fact, it's almost impossible because of the 2023 date. This could take years to work itself through the court system. So prior to the amendments that we adopted, it did nothing, Mr. President, other than put a non-codified law out there that says, "This is what we're contemplating on, but we're not really going to do anything, folks, until the point that the federal courts decide." So then it has a provision in subsection B that comes in and says, "Now the courts have decided..." Assume there was actually a decision before March 31st of 2023, which I highly doubt that's going to happen. In fact, I'd say it's almost remotely impossible that's going to happen, Mr. President. But let's assume that it did. What does the bill then do? It says that if there is a conflicting provision between state law and federal law, and the federal government rules, our law no longer stands. It's in conflict if the courts rule that the federal law has the full force and effect, is enforceable by law, our law goes away. It is subservient, assuming that we ever got a decision before March 31st, 2023. So that provision with all the lawyers or all the employers and all this discussion, in my humble opinion, Mr. President, is moot because the bill doesn't do anything until that final disposition. So I was prepared to vote no until we amended it. So what does the bill do now in the codified section of law? It goes in there and it says, "If your child's in the public school system and you don't want them to get a vaccination, that you can ask for a waiver and that waiver shall be granted." Mr. President, that's what it does. It goes into the codified section. It also says that you can't require a vaccine passport. And it also comes in and says that if your parent does not want your child, for whatever reason, to have to wear a mask in the public school system, that you can ask for a waiver, Mr. President. That's the only thing the bill does in all likelihood. Those three things are the only thing that goes into the codified section of law that would go into effect the day this is signed into law. That's what the bill doesn't do, which is not a lot on the employer's side because it doesn't go into effect. They'll never get through the court system by the time that this sun sets. That's what we're voting on here today. That's what the bill does. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Senator Nethercutt?
Thank you, Mr. President. So just a question for the good senator and for the people listening. The passage of House Bill 1001 as amended would do nothing to protect anyone's jobs. Isn't that true?
Further comment? Questions? Questions? Question on the bill has been called. House Bill 1001, having been read three separate times, the question is, "Shall the bill pass?" Clerk will call the roll. Chief Clerk?
House Bill 1001, third reading vote. Anderson? No. Baldwin? No. Bytmann? Aye. Boner? Aye. Bouchard? Aye. Case? No. Cooper? Aye. Driscoll?
Aye.
Aye. Ellis? No. French? Aye. Furphy? No. Guru? No. Hicks? Aye. Hutchings? Aye. James? Aye. Kinske? No. Cole? Aye. Cost? Cost? No. Landon? No. McCune? Aye. Nethercutt? No. Pappas, excuse. Perkins?
Perkins, no.
No. Rothus? No. Salazar? Aye. Schuler? Aye. Scott, excuse. Steinmetz? Aye. Wasserberger? No. President Dogstetter? Aye. Closing vote? Closing vote closed. On the bill, 15 aye, 13 no, two excused.
House Bill 1001, having received the affirmative vote, excuse me, it's failed. Excuse me. House Bill 1001, having failed to receive the affirmative vote of the majority of the members elected to the Senate, House Bill 1001 has failed to pass the Senate.
Mr. President?
Senator Perkins?
Have you concluded your business with HB 1001, sir?
Yes.
Mr. President, having voted on the prevailing side, I move for immediate reconsideration of House Bill 1001.
No objection? This is, folks, this is for reconsideration. Reconsideration. Chief Clerk will call the roll.
For reconsideration, Anderson? Aye. Baldwin? No. Bytmann? Aye. Boner? Aye. Bouchard? Aye. Case? No. Cooper? Aye. Driscoll?
Aye.
Aye. Ellis? No. French? Aye. Furphy? No. Guru? No. Hicks? Aye. Hutchings? Aye. James? Aye. Kinske? No. Cole? Aye. Cost? No. Landon? No. McCune? Aye. Nethercutt? Aye. Pappas, excuse. Perkins? Perkins, aye?
No, no. Perkins, no.
Perkins, no. Thank you. Rothus? No. Salazar? Aye. Schuler? Aye. Scott, excuse. Steinmetz? Aye. Wasserberger? No. President Dogstetter? Aye. Anderson? Aye to no. Nethercutt, aye to no. Closing vote? Closing vote closed. For the reconsideration, 15 aye, 13 no, two excused.
Vote on reconsideration for House Bill 1001 has failed. Mr. Vice President, would you fill in? Hold for just a moment, please. Mr. Vice President, I'm going to ask you to fill in for the floor later in just a moment. So they considering, give us a little break here, health break and food break. Wait, wait, wait. Hold for just a moment. We're just double checking everything. Okay, we've double checked everything, folks. We have passed the reconsideration. Went to the rule book or at least the rule folder. So with that, go ahead.
Ayes, wouldn't it require 16?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
The motion for reconsideration is a majority of the quorum present. The motion, the original motion, which is passage of a bill, is a majority of those duly elected. We just passed the motion for reconsideration, which puts the original motion back into its standing prior to vote. So we passed reconsideration. Now, without debate, there will be a new vote, another vote on the prior question, which was final passage of the legislation, which will require a majority of those duly elected. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ready, clear? Good? Okay, we're going back to the vote. This is on House Bill 1001, third reading, following approval for reconsideration. Roll call, please, Chief Clerk.
Reconsideration, third reading, House Bill 1001, roll call vote. Anderson? No. Baldwin? No. Bytmann? Aye. Boner? Bouchard?
Could we keep, continue on?
Bouchard? Aye. Case? No. Cooper? Aye. Driscoll?
Aye.
Aye. Ellis? No. French? Aye. Furphy? No. Guru? No. Hicks? Aye. Hutchings? Aye. James? Aye. Kinske? No. Cole? Aye. Cost?
Senator Cost?
Cost, no. Landon? No. McCune? Aye. Nethercutt? No. Pappas, excuse. Perkins?
Perkins, no.
No. Rothus?
No.
No. Salazar? Aye. Schuler? Aye. Scott, excuse. Steinmetz? Aye. Wasserberger? No. Boner? Excused, Mr. President?
Excused.
Excused. President Dogstetter? Aye. Closing vote? Closing vote closed. Upon reconsideration, House Bill 1001, third reading, 14 aye, 13 no, three excuse.
House Bill 1001, having failed to receive affirmative vote, majority of the members on reconsideration elected to the Senate have failed to pass the Senate. So with that, Mr. Vice President, give us some direction, maybe a short break, health break for various reasons?
Mr. President, I move that we stand recessed until 2:00 PM.
Stand recessed until 2:00 PM. Let's do this. Yeah. Mr. Vice President, we still have one bill here, so I'm thinking a very short break because people need a rest, but we still have to get this bill ready for the House. So you want to reconsider that?
I will reconsider. I can probably eat in 30 minutes. I don't know about the rest of these.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Mr. President, I move that we stand at recess until 1:35.
1:35. You heard announcements? Announcements? You've heard the motion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion's passed. Quick break, folks.